Hi. Um. 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 Table. Yeah, I know. I caught you between my straws. Just introduce yourself in the door. Um.
Run, we should evolve. Yeah.
All right, um, let's see. No, does everyone feeling like they want to do a nice cover? Should we just get going on this? I feel like. Yeah, okay. Um, so the first word is, um, any more discussion. Um. Um. To me, it's helpful for us. And I'm gonna kind of kick it off and what I have from a lot of our council members. Why we're talking about this. So very specific part of our procedure. It's been a bit about. I don't know, an issue, any interpretation, and plus. I don't know, not per se, but specifically eight point. I think. If we're on a council procedure. Maybe there's one of the. I don't know. Um, I'm sorry. But you can pull it up if you. Okay, um, so eight point five is titled council discussion. And specifically, our member has one question. They implement themselves to one question. So. And. Additional questions, maybe in the face of. Um. Um. Eight point five. One. So, yeah, I guess what what has come up as an issue with this is there are times where a council member may ask a question. Staff answers. And then there's kind of like a follow up question. And the struggle is, you know, if we leave that and go back around, you kind of lose that, you know, where we've been in with that question, that person. And then sometimes it can lead to a big problem with questions. And so at that point, it's it's just been tricky. Um, and then you go away, then a council member or somebody discusses after that one meeting where. How do you quantify? If I want to make a comment and then I have one question? It just gets, it's been, it's been kind of called a question. Most council members getting the same as well. A few of us have spoken last meeting and had to. More. Well. Just. Exactly. That's what she was saying. That's what I heard from you all about what she also is. Is a problem that one has. Um. Any thoughts on ways we could better?
Yeah, I mean, I agree generally with what you said. I think there are a couple of things. There's the comments and run on comment and. It's just a several remarks, you know? So how do you quantify that? Um, from the question, I think the other issue that came up that you didn't mention was if I'm asking a question of the senior administrator. And she responds. And then I'm like, you really didn't. Or I need to clarify the response. To your point, I think we go around the whole sort of council again to get clarification because someone else will. Um, potentially related to the same topic. And I think that's one of the where the value of. Even if it was, you know, a mix of time and or a number of, you know, this. That gets a little complicated too, but I think I think it's on a basis through laws, which we get their complete turn of thought. Probably provide an opportunity to clarify commentary, action, staff. You put in order. You know. That's. How it works. Restrictions and beginnings of. I. Uh, what's. Right. Um. Um. Questions. Um. And that way you can. Okay. Yes. Thank you. Um. Any still idea? And. I. You have a question. I can let the. Ask. Um, where where the person who's being asked a question, just not always. All the way around. Wait a minute. One year. I can't do it. Sharing.
Follow up. Do. And it's like, well. Responding and then. Thought I feel there's eleven other little follow ups that could come with it. So I just think you can continue this on to two and then you can. Now, do you have any thoughts on this procedure?
I mean, the good news is that there's not like a lot of people. How council. Also. Um, responding. I think, um, all of them. We. Sign. Um.
Why? You have not seen. No, I. One sort of. Cause that's the part where you initially be giving. And the challenge is, you know, someone has one extra question, the question is longer. And I think this is where the work coming from Austin is that the first thing, everyone gets an opportunity to improve in dialogue. You don't allow one person to not allow a meeting and your pointing them. Some folks, you don't get a chance to ask a question. You might have kept your question in secret, but we just lack an opportunity. And I think some of the challenges have been kind of good that congratulations. It's sort of discussed or considered. Um, that sometimes occur when when if you guys don't. We were the world running five, we didn't find Washington. Sometimes like you said, it's really out. I don't think they just keep mentioning. They only were really directed by, they just. Find. Good morning. I don't know. Because I think we have a follow up that's not here and you cut off and say useful information after we're rushing. That's. And I don't know, once again, kind of having this monitor and you were running meetings are kind of like that, even in the rear. Most. Same question. Next question. Um. Uh. Keep. Um. As we. They just. Okay. Have we? Yeah. Got it. Oh.
Bye. Is that? We can talk. Did I call on your next? We. All of. Our. Cool, one question. I think the intent really is, um, if you get. This. Times that I just. But in the intention of. Make sure. Um, if we dial into. It's really. So it's nice to have a bit of less. This. All. I know that can also. Why I've seen some time or in some way. But I I think the way this starts is interesting. So. She says they should. You know, it's almost. All I have. Yeah. Sure to do it, but it's asking us how that could be a private comment. One question, but I agree, follow ups sometimes come on like your question. Like I said, or something. It's like. But if it's. Didn't that? Stop it. You have any way. Yeah, I mean, so this is very much, um, you know, council procedure. Um. But. We don't want. No question for. So. That's really. No, that that's a really great point. For all. You can be. Right. Where and then you're. So I'm gonna ask you different. Different response. So we have to walk a really different line there. Um, and again, I think that really comes down to the body and personnel. Kind of share as well. I think sometimes the chair may the bodies help, you know, um, because then the feelings of fear may. I mean, there's also. Two ways to. We're like going right. And. About it for a more question and anyone can make that. And if everyone agrees that.
Uh. I would be. I mean, what is my?
I don't know. I'm feeling it out. Like there's not. Maybe.
I I. Come on. All. Wow.
Um. I guess it's getting in my mind. How can people learn twice and be better at. Now offer to. Other. For. Ask. For discussion like it is, then you don't call it. As then maybe I have, uh, mentioned the follow up question. Clarify.
He's talking. First one that I'm going to be looking back here. Um. Pretty. After he break, I did want to. Let me just to get clarification. The. Um, question versus and or a follow up. Which is how we were treating the comment. If that is inclusive of the question, if that if it doesn't exclusively say anything about a comment technically, you can comment just more than about the question. You wouldn't be privy, but how you approach the comment. It does. Which got my, you know, trigger response, but I need to just move in a group. I think it would be good. Um. We have one. That has also gotten.
Yeah. Sometimes that happens. I think we should. I usually like to make some comments and then. Sometimes it'll happen. A lot of my questions. When I have. This. I mean. And then I mean, my question. Sometimes it happens. Staff may not just want your question. You might have something. There. They may want to answer. Is maybe comments. You know, like it kind of like it ends up sounding like maybe it wasn't really a question. They. I don't know. I sometimes I think that happens and it might make it seem like it wasn't. That would come down. Kind of listening. But again, that comes to the intent too of this, but I think is really for me at least comments, like I think we should make our comments and. Question itself. Cause I mean, if one person always goes first. Used to never. Anything is like, well. Ask all the questions. I think it was just trying to spread it out. But. Um, well, thanks to you in the comment. Uh. Nope, we didn't. And. Um.
Um. By the way, making more files kind of. Celebrations were intended to provide. Up to your standard, which you see, which would be on. Not question. Um, yeah. That's.
Yeah. So.
Right. All. That's. You. Back. What you recall. You're right. But. And we should be. Revenant. Okay. On. Um. That. Oh. That'd be next. I remember. Leave my part. I mean. Yeah. I. Um.
So. I'm. To. You. One. Yeah.
In this. Right. She's. Actually. So I see it really as, um, focusing on why your position is going to be spread and why your. Have seen. But that's just my my. For how. This. Not. And rebuttals are a bracketing in the statements that. But I think that's also. Five.
Um, question. On this topic. And we were also. You know, we're not switching the. With injecting on back to the chair. Um, the kind of since that interaction, I'm probably just fine with our creation to be just. We got it. But all. Are we offsetting as we addressing each other? You know, we're trying to tell how I think. Um, actually, when we're addressing staffers as part of the congregation, we have to not switch to. How much of the captain. But this is. That also addresses some of the arguments. My question is rejected to the chair. Well, I'm not sure how that even works back to the staff member, but. But.
Is it always supposed to be? Okay, I'll put you on, but I know you don't.
I have seen it done. Lesser. Um. It also can. Be supportive of all. Right. So. Right, when the person's feeling like. Uh. I don't know. Um. Procedures. So. Yeah.
Um. Also. Um. Being out to hear this question. You see. Um. Could have been. Then there's a, you know, need to do some double making of them. Then you have. Now our. Off the screen. That kind of opens up the. Where we. Second.
That. Can't sing. It's ours. We have.
Uh, I'm kind of. Fine. So that really is a good. For this. Um. That's.
Well, let's say. Yeah. So I think we need that. To. To. Yeah. Wait, yeah. Well. Well. Okay, I believe this type of. But it's more. Yeah, I think if I'm trying to. Wasn't. And that was the. Were us. I think you know, just all. Just. Stuff on me. I didn't know if it was. Oh, I thought.
This is one thing. The beginning of when the. One motion. One. Discussing. So I'm seeing because she's. I've been. Um, the one thing I was going to ask you. To. All. You can push it. All. I've been. You can. Yes. Yeah. Hmm. To the. Oh. I have this mechanism.
Hi. And I think you just were skipping. Um, that was the whole thing, and I think that so you'll still see remnants. I asked the mayor over last meeting and said, uh, requesting council with it used to be five point six or something like that, I think. And so I told her, I'm like. And she's like, well, you can say it. And I was like, okay, but like, I'm pretty sure we don't need to see that anymore. It's not in our. Um, I would say. You know, the cat, my personal opinion on it, it's so soon since we just. I wouldn't want. But again, because. Whole thing around. Why it was. Some of the historical reasons behind. Um, issues on the agendas out there where we don't want to list everything. It's a bit of a fault. It's more for the public. Because if somebody from the public said, um, oh, this is just a discussion, I can't. Next week. Voting. I know. Maybe it's more for the public. Than for. I think none of them, we may make a decision on it. Because I mean, we will. And I think stuffs. About which is to be changed. Or they has to. We would, we are requesting. Because we need to submit this grant by this time. And so it normally would be time dependent. To it. And I found that sometimes they're able to let us. Kind of shoot your update or some things kind of coming down the pipeline. Not everything rises to the level of needing an agenda item on a cow. That's kind of was the hang up. It took a lot of time, like four or five years ago for staff to. You've got to get it on a cow. I mean, you've noticed a lot of our meeting. That doesn't mean there's not a lot of work going on in the city, right? I mean, there's, there's a ton going on. So there is a lot that we were crowding our agendas. Really wasn't anything to discuss at that point. Telling us what it would be or what it would be coming. So it just took a lot of extra. I wasn't. To the council or to the public. And so I think it was just coming streaming. Like. Something could have been better. But, uh, I think I like what I'm trying to say is I feel like we are still following. On it. On anything that we.
I mean, it's one thing. Do I remember? Doesn't. Ebony or Rep. Present. On the. Someone. I. Do. Um. And. Staff not. Steamer. Don't happen. Hmm.
That, I mean, I feel like I have a decent sense of what. More discussion time. There are just some things that maybe there was. So, um, yeah, I don't know. I, I think you're. So I, but I think what I heard you say this year. Is. We should at the beginning, when it comes to an agenda item, we touch. To. You know, the motion. Slid. This. Makes. You all. Hmm. That's that. Um, however, that doesn't, that only itself does not mean we have. Something.
Off course. Yeah. Point that. For all of positive, it's often two questions. We need, we need to. We would have. Even. Yeah, the reason maybe you said giving that. That we shift how we. Handle out discussions, whether it's. As a question, you have. Three function, but I think that was. They're pre-racked. Emotion. Um, yeah.
And I think for me, at least, is I get Johnny voice saying, wait, I sell it out. Because you. I, every time I. There's a lot to be needed for it. And then there's a lot to. Meaning. I think we can all. I don't. If I'm during a meeting and someone calls up. Please be your point. Basically, what will be. Perkin and I am. You know. It's staying in that. And I think it's not just. People need and people all need to help. Get better. I thought we had that. For those, that is a really great book. I have read. It's the more we prefer procedures to see. However, you find something. Whatever. It's. Might just be. All. Um. Because I think this has been a thing. We have had positive. So, yeah, I think we need to take it. No, it's not. No, no, because this is a lot. This is a lot to master and yet. So. That is something that we can, you know, um, I can. Talk about. Well. Um, that. Um. I think that would come down more to. The council. Yeah. Vote on certain there. So I can chat with the mayor. It's not thinking about the conference, but, um, I can chat with her and make sure he's, you know, crying. I mean, there is going to be a shift. We're going to try this. We're going to try to be a bit more formal about this.
Still go.
Well, and I can. Um. All. No choice. I would. Create an American experiment eight point five. There might be an opportunity to maybe invent eight point five a little bit. Yeah. Um. And then once you're all happy. I'm sorry.
My. Well. All.
So. Yeah. Me. I think. Not. Five. Two. Okay. Sort of policy. Having made. After these. Especially. This. Hmm. Hmm. Making law. I mean, usually. Usually we'll get some, sometimes, because sometimes. You know, like. I'll just do it in, you know, three weeks. See, sometimes we'll get ahead of stuff, other times we'll be long. Um, those are good ones. I mean, really, why would we not? Because to offer something. Um, but it's just part of formality. But I, I think that's really good example. Of. Like scenes. So.
I. So, um, if I. If this.
I think it's. If we need. By in a way that. Or maybe just. True. Like, I think I have. For. You know, you don't want to. Ultimately. Power. So as you had it. It's more like. Yeah, I mean, that we should be making. That's. I don't. That. Like me. Second. Say. And this. He's. Thank you. I think. Have it. I mean, because it will just take some. Anyone. Oh, I. I mean, sometimes that's.
One. You're asking. It. Which is the. This is. It shouldn't be depending on. That's the one. I only know that is. If I. If it's not specifically. Uh, deviated from. Then we should also. Um. I find. Fine.
I know, but there's three. I'm not trying to give you proof.
I don't know the answer to your question offhand. I'm going to have to look at. Because what I'm hearing is, let's say advice. To approve, you know, whatever agenda bill, someone second says, okay, let's stop. A run of motion. So what I will take. Um, if someone then to. You know what I mean? So that's a technical question. I would have. You have to approach it as a main handling. And you can, and moving to table is not a really technical thing at all. They'll get it. It's a great question because I think that would give us some reassurance.
On that, yeah. So that would be a situation where. You could use a motion.
That's enough to mean.
Right. And then you'd be able to discuss.
In this role of motion to. Because table and break slower.
Motion, you would do postpone that. Or postpone a certain time and those. System, no honor.
Yes. And I'm thinking of myself most day. I got to speak because it's fascinating. The better we learn it and practice it, the easier. I think I have good direction on the eight point five and I think that'd be pretty. I don't want to be over optimistic. Okay. So, um, okay. Um, so before I move on. Okay, um. Okay, I did give him a heart. Uh, for all gosh, many years. I don't even know what to tell him. Well, we just wanted to. Been with us recently, really challenging times. Um. Yeah, well, we appreciate that. Thank you. All right. So next up, we have discussion on mission, vision, value statement by city. Um, sure. I think. Show you what I've done and kind of what I was hoping to. What I've done that's taken five. Provide city. And put them on here. And so you all have sticky notes. And so what I was hoping you could do is communicate for. Be identify. Maybe life about them, identify the words. Life, um, whether it's scratch. And it's on these. I also put down here. What else? Are there things that are missing? Now, I kind of, I found, you know, for the. I tried to pull ones that were a little bit out different and similar. But the one in form. One in work. Uh, this one was so long that I didn't write it in a prior approach. I just printed it out and taped it to the computer, but it has a lot of content. So as you're thinking about, you know, these are things you want to put on website. Mission, vision and that. Um. So the thought would be for all of you to. You guys can use that. Good life. Don't like words that run title. And also. Well, I think. Having. Now, I have any. Budget. Something common, but not. Iconic. I will say though, even though they worked up with. And so this is kind of the first ever objects. Like this one. I, I, my guess is that it. Like maybe somebody thought about that, but it feels a little marketing. So this is the way to get you all started because the context present. Wanted something now. How cool. Pretty good. That one. Both or in content rich. Um, yeah, has a mission. So that's, um. What I thought maybe we would do. Let's see, probably. I'll see her out after fifteen, twenty minutes. Like just read this and say, I like this about it. I. Don't like this or this would be great if any thoughts you have for each of them. And then if there's something that you feel really needs to be in your. Valley stick it, you don't. I'll find. And one of them is store line. From friend wall walla. See. Can I kind of.
Give this up. Okay.
I'm trying to think of certain words we might stop and work, but.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's why I just want to send you all the stuff I have from back to one. Like like. I'm sure I want to. Once.
We're gonna have to do Boston itself. So. What version story by Mr. Calvin? Call me to do that. Oh, yes.
Yes. Yeah, what I think is the same way like if you just. Yeah, and for the.
Protection.
Well, wanting to really. I don't know, maybe. All right, so is there anything that people want to share before I. Kind of take these, I mean, take pictures of them. And emphasize them as just something that is a deliverable for you all. But is there any kind of guidance that you want to give for your perspective before I do that?
I'm not. I'm not. That's a service. But you can become value in. In. People to see or or words in our subject.
Yeah, like this. What was interesting is if. If after we developed this, if we put it up on a wall, there's scenes without names. Publish with ours. And so for me, what would pop out like our or things like that, I mean, that. We all have a big art culture. And really just we can roll. There's adding in some of those, because I think they're all really good and we all found a lot of fun. Five months in time, but I thought it was an interesting thought. If we formulate this and put it up on a wall without a name, would you be able to get cards out of. So for me, that would be. Okay. Anyone else? Oh, is there a. There we go. Um, okay, well, I will take pictures of this and then try to come up with something and bring it back to you all. Um. The answer also. Nothing wrong. So next thing is budget. Um. So. Your budget last time, the part that was on. The legend going into story. And two components to it. The first component was. Why did you all budget for. And then plenty more. Um. That'll accomplish your. Goal. I don't have all the budget information. But on this side is what you believe you've accomplished in. I think you're like. How committed to you. What do you think you've accomplished? This. Being part of it. What do you want to accomplish? Wanted to get done this last time and then. Part of me. But. These years. For now. I think. It's. Um, uh, response to father government. Something. On which. Government. Uh, safe community, vibrant economy. Built in macro environment. That's. Our last. On this side. Accomplished. Then on this side. And there's. That. Fun.
What we. For our.
No, you know, we start with that. So. Let's keep saying that. Of course, people like. Well. What do you want to accomplish? On that side, it's. That's accomplished. And. Last thing we did in. I think our. Art design contract and lots of things. Boss. This way. Was. Nine. Yeah. This one. Coming out. Oh, I think this is something thing because I know what. What might keep the interest council in coming and that's. So I think this is perfect to help shake out some names. I imagine we might. You should decide, but yeah, I know, I think this. I want to take as long as possible. We need to be real little. It's a little important. And maybe you spend like. Twenty minutes and then maybe we talk about it and maybe. Write some more stuff after we talk about it and it helps stimulate ideas. So maybe you had to do it that way. I don't know. Does that sound good?
Yeah, it will help you with this set.
Yeah.
As well on going through everything that was budgeted.
Yeah.
On, you know, kind of filling in. Easy to forget sometimes too. Ideas on what was actually budgeted from a project perspective that are more philosophical.
Yeah.
What you think was. Right, yeah. You want to.
Yeah. That's funny. Um. And you got. Yeah. My. I'm just curious to make. One of them. Yeah. Yeah. I'd tell you something. Yeah, and you would of course. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you have to.
But I was. Whether it's. You know, I was just using. Twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two, but I was just using the buttons and then trying. Instead. When we. You're funny. We've actually done a lot on a lot. You're funny. We've actually done a lot on a lot of.
I think you sent a job that you know, like what? Put that slideshow on here on the secret. Yeah, it was like eleven.
Trying to get a different guy. To find the. Yes. I was called. It's beautiful and you have. Yeah. But I'm sorry. Yeah. So I have to write aside, um. The.
You must say.
Yeah. 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 Don't think that it is, do we have a staff that we? We have the right. Um, Mr. Bill. Yeah. And so.
Um, yeah, I'm never going to. Last month, I mean.
Yeah, and that's really what the council question is, right? It's my job to make sure that are being. Someone to. Yeah, there, I mean, that's.
Right there.
On our. Some of us. Okay, here we go. So this is what you've had offered for twenty. Yeah, there are some things you might have as simple that you can.
Your fun.
Yeah.
From our.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, and we'll go through, uh, there are some things that council accomplished that for in the budget. Yeah. Um, that I think will be really important to capture as you're telling your story to. By getting. Nice. And again, really. Workup, um, as we work with the meeting on for the. On. But yeah. That one to. Okay, and. And there's. All.
But we look for.
Johnson has like.
In my. Uh, last one.
Yeah, I need it to from Friday. For me to go and picture one that are less. Since I was walking from Friday. Yeah. It's beautiful. Yeah, the front desk, um. Yeah. Yeah, last Friday, Steve, when I walked. Yeah. Yeah. Do you have to then anywhere for the department? Have they have undercard? Hi. You ever try? Last week. Um. They. They hire. They're on the hire. Like five.
Five. Three. Should be my. I think this should be my.
That's. That's. Yeah.
We need one.
Now. That one. Um, next thing. Two or three, uh, two things are. I need to sit down and see. So probably. Do things like. Yeah, you have to have a. Well.
Um.
Anyone want to talk about anything or any questions or anything? Okay, I keep thinking. And my first conversation were. That's wrong. It's I I know I'm like. Okay. So I mean, do you want to go through an. I can't answer that. Yeah. I'm longer on. Because these are. You mind if I come around here? Um. I am. What is it then? Um, yes. Some that we bought. Worked that way. Um. Oh, then yeah, the accessories office. So, yeah. Yeah, no, I think this is where it goes. How with mine in terms of. Yeah. Like. Uh, do you mean get. Come back a little more? I think we could only add more. Um, I might do this. Better and right into development. Well, I just think when the size is accessible. One of the things we can have already is the same question. But what do we? Um, once we. Right. I heard some white stuff comes in on something. But like flashback could be tools with the art because it maintains that. Yeah. When submission for the. Um, yeah, that's a whole safety. I think you could be fine to look at that. Yeah, to learn. Um, I am. Uh, friends presenting. Um, we might set new partners. Very important. About being like, I think it's like all like this guy. Kind of like. It's. Yeah, I got. We have a. Yeah. And the first one is timing time. So how many for the late planning and parts? Find something art. All right, let's start. We can't do all the. That's. Yeah. Is it? Yeah, we must. Yeah, perfect.
He's pretty other one.
I feel they should not that's right, but if they had each city, take them out and. But we have. Yeah. How? It's. Because just. Um, you want. Some point you have. Yes, we're gonna start. Um. Um. Yeah, and well. Yeah, so.
Keep going.
Right, so it makes much while to have. What? Stop. Um, I'll tell the budget, but I think it was.
Start with you.
I could say. Yeah. I know. Yeah, from where. We've been using Microsoft. And some. Um. Yeah. Um, yeah. Yeah. Uh, well. Yeah. And yeah, the.
You're pulling people.
Okay, so. No, 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 no. I knew that would be wrong. Anything else before I adjourn then? That was our last. Uh, item. So before we get out here, does that, anything else? Okay, so we're gonna go adjourn at seven fifty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah.